Thank you, sir. Okay, calling to order the Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, the regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, August 11th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. First order of business is, look at that, calling, uh, called order seating of alternates. Um, I know Doug is not available. We have an open position and Mike, you haven't seen Alex trying to get in, uh, get in at the moment, did you?
Nope.
Okay, so we're going to go with the six commissioners that we have Janet, Norad, myself, Jerry, Mark, and Luther. Okay. So, uh, first, second order of business approval of minutes from July 14th, 2025. Is there a motion to, uh, accept the minutes of July 14th?
Motion to accept.
Very, thank you, Jerry. Is there a second?
All second.
That was Luther. Thank you, Luther. And, um, here we go, uh, discussion. I have one item. When I printed these up to look at them, I mean, I read them, uh, digitally before, but I think we need to do an edit and resubmit because it seemed like when I printed, I had three pages from a previous, um, meeting, uh, on there. So those are attached to the current set. So we'll probably get that, uh, Mark, can you make that edit and resubmit to the, uh, Town FERC's office?
Yep, I'll take a look again.
Thank you, sir. I think we all finished on the last page when it said Valerie, uh, and 7:25 and we're good to go. So, uh, and again, I want to thank Valerie, uh, for, uh, agreeing to do our minutes again for this week, uh, for this month. Um, trying not to make it a regular thing, Valerie, doing my best to get some staff in to cover that. So again, thank you for, uh, your efforts and, uh, covering that. Okay, so, uh, with that as the only statement, uh, with the change and the removal of those three extra pages, uh, can I get a, uh, all those in favor of approving the minutes from July 14th, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Will go as unanimous. Thank you.
Uh, I was gonna abstain Jeff, Mark, you know, I wasn't.
I'm sorry, Mark, you weren't here. I usually go through the effort to abstention. Thank you, Mark. Okay, so that would leave a five, zero, and one abstention. Uh, okay, uh, moving on to bills, the Chronicle, we had a bill for, uh, our hearings of 32592. Uh, it's not cheap putting it in the paper. Don't know what good it does. Um, as for item five, correspondence, we did receive in Mansfield Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, referrals as a, uh, what do we call it? A bordering community, a bordering town. Uh, very briefly, uh, Mansfield Planning and Development number P907-67, uh, a PZC initiated amendment to Article 2, 190-73 of zoning regulations related to site plan requirements. That's the cover page. It is 28 pages long. Read at your leisure. Um, second one is P907-68, PZC initiated amendments to Article 90, 190-74 related to special permits. That one is 13 pages long. The third is P907-69, PZC initiated amendments to Article 190-63 of zoning regs related to water pipeline overlay regulations. That one's eight pages long. And P907-70, PZC initiated amendments to Article 2, 190-75 of the zoning regs related to performance standard regulations, page 24.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Did we skip item number three?
Did I?
Yeah, you did.
I'm sorry, I did, but inadvertently it were jammed, jammed right over because we love the public comment section. I'm sorry. So, um,
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine. I appreciate it. You know, the fact I didn't get your, didn't get your attend, uh, you didn't get my attention earlier, but thank you. Um, so yes, let's open it up to public comments. Uh, again, limited to topics or items not otherwise listed on the agenda that are going to hearing, uh, or have an application, uh, to be processed. So, um, opening up to public comment. Mr. Panic?
Thank you. Good evening.
Please, uh, also, also please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Panic, 16, 18, and number 20, Viewpoint Drive, and also Five Circle Drive, all in Ashford, all on Lake Chaffee. I'm the current president of the Lake Chaffee Association. Uh, and I'm following up a little bit on the June 9th meeting, uh, where Section 300-17D short-term rental regulations were discussed. Uh, then at the July 14th meeting of your board, it was voted on to continue it to tonight's meeting, but I did not see it on the agenda tonight. I suspect that maybe that's another error. But as it may be, since it's not on the agenda and public comments, you can speak about anything that's not on the agenda, I'd like to just say a few words. In June, your commission received feedback from council on issues raised regarding the regulations. It was stated that your commission needs to look at the regulations themselves with regards to some specific points, uh, one being primary residents, in quotes. Primary residence seems to me to be a mute point at this state with the regulations because the regulations already include hosted versus non-hosted, so, short-term rentals. So a non-hosted short-term rental would mean that the person is not there, not living there. And primary residence seems to be a mute point. At that meeting in June, there were three options floated by the commission with some possible other modifications. And I'd just like for a minute, before we speak about those options, I'd like to step back to some of the basics in the current regulations that exist today. Section D, uh, number one, the owner, uh, the owner must obtain a short-term rental zoning permit from the commission prior to offering their properties for rental. Section D, number four, and I'll read from the regs. The first permit issued pursuant to subsection D shall expire within one year of the issuance. After one year of compliance with all the regulations pursuant to the subsection, renewed permits shall expire within two years of issuance. A permit of any length may be revoked if the zoning enforcement officer receives information in the form of complaints, documentation, photographs, or witness non-compliance with the regulations by the permighty, including any activity or condition that interferes with the owner or a butter's reasonable or lawful use and enjoyment of his property. Says such revocation is subject to the review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a permit, uh, a permit issued pursuant to the subsection may be conditioned to limit the number of days during which the temporary rentals may occur. And in the regulations, it states that that's three times in a six-month period. Moving on, back to your proposed options. Your option one says that it's a possibility that you could modify the current regulations to be more functional by allowing more frequent rentals. Again, I have to assume that that's a typo because everything I've read since 2022 in the zoning regulations all talks about shortening the rentals, not allowing more frequent rentals. And secondly, it says removing the standard quote-unquote "primary residence" uh, in an effort to eliminate standards that are unenforceable. Well, primary residence to me only means one thing. If, uh, it, primary residence deters investors from buying homes only for the purpose of short-term rentals. But limiting the amount of uses would better deter investors because if the goal of the planning and zoning is to not have people buying cottages in lake areas and other parts of the town and using them 24/7, 365 days a year as a short-term rental, then primary residence should be enforced, or it would be better to limit the amount of users because if you can only have it three times in six months or six times a year, then an investor wouldn't buy a $300,000 or $400,000 cottage on a lake, fix it all up, and rent it out 52 weeks a year at about $1,000 a clip. Option two, increase the compliance standards and the regulatory requirements in an attempt to further regulate the use, not the user. Well, I like that. Anything that further regulates the requirements is great. So I'm in favor of line one of, uh, option two. And I'm also in favor of number two in option two, which is recommend that the Board of Selectmen consider adopting a citation fine ordinance as an official enforcement tool. I am also in favor of that. Uh, another modification, other modifications, you had things like raising the price to get your zoning certificate. Uh, I don't think that that really is gonna help $300 to somebody who's renting out a unit for $1,000 a week for 52 weeks a year, or even if it's summer only '26, is a very small amount that's gonna deter anything. Limiting the number of stays, definitely agree limiting the stays should be enforced. And an approval letter from the Lake Association or Lake HOA fee, uh, I think is also another good idea. Would also allow us to know who's doing what and when and where. Moving forward, back to, uh, one other point that was made in your meeting minutes, uh, it says that Mr. Smilver Smith, uh, you continued to state that the possible changes proposed, and I'm quoting from the minutes, says Jeff continued to state the possible changes proposed are in reaction to a residence's unvalidated complaints about parking, noise, animal waste, et cetera. Well, I don't know that you can complain about animal waste, parking, or noise, but under the comma, the, the, the preface of et cetera, I would say, how about the number of uses and actually having a valid permit? I would think that those things would be pretty simple to obtain whether that exists or not. And, um, I just don't know, I, I don't understand, uh, what unvalidated means. If you have a complaint with an address and a name, and you look in your records and there's no permit, well, then the guy's not in compliance. But the people that are using, uh, that property are not in compliance. And there should be some ramification for that. For instance, if I was to build a house at Five Circle Drive, a property I own at the lake, and I didn't have a building permit, and I started putting a foundation in with siding and windows and all the stuff, I would assume that the building official would come and order a cease and desist and tell me to stop building my house. That's pretty simple. It, it, there's, I don't think that there's a whole heck of a lot of wiggle room there. Um, I understand that the board says that they are trying to find better ways to enforce these things, but you, there's gotta be a way to enforce it when you don't have a permit. I mean, that's basic, simple step number one in the rules and regulations. If you don't have a permit, you can't have an Airbnb. And if you use the Airbnb for the number of uses that some of them in town have been used for, I find it hard to believe that unvalidated complaint. I read the complaint that was given to the board. It was part of the record. And it's not unvalidated. It's very validated. Um, I don't want to get into any more specifics because I assume that at some later meeting, it will get back on the agenda. And when it's back on the agenda, I would like to speak more in specifics to the actual, uh, short-term rental that most of the discussions that's happened over the last three years is about. But I reserve the right to speak at a later date when maybe there's a public hearing, or maybe there's a, an attempt for, uh, someone to get a new permit, uh, and maybe it's underneath some new rules and regulations that are, you know, more advanced than the current basic ones that are being broken now. Uh, and to sum up, I asked the commission, when it gets back on the agenda, to please be sure that you have all the facts so that you can act in a way that benefits not only the town, but its lake residents as well. And again, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Panic. Uh, any other public comment at this time? I don't see an electric hand. I don't see a waving hand. I think everybody's on the same page here. Okay. All right. Very good. We will move on. Um, to our public hearing section. Uh, uh, the first public hearing will be for PZ-25-3, a special permit application per Section 300-18C for motor vehicle sales and service at 221 Pompe Hollow Road. Uh, the applicant is, oh, and please help me if I, uh, hurt, uh, destroy your name, Karuka? Is that close?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to go over a few procedures for the hearing, this hearing and the hearing to follow. Uh, we will hear from the applicant. Uh, we will hear from the commission and staff with, uh, questions and statements. Uh, we'll then hear from the public. I ask the public to keep your, uh, information you're, that you're looking to share through three minutes or less, and please state your name and address when you make any comment. Uh, we will then have the last word from the applicant and see where we are in the hearing process at that point. So, that being said, uh, we will go with Mr. Karuka first to, uh, discuss his application.
Hey, everyone. My name is Oles Karuka from, uh, 221 Pompe Hollow Road. Uh, we're planning on opening a used car sales and service business in Ashford as a small family business.
Is there anything else you'd like to share either out of your narrative or, um?
Um, that's, that, that's it for now, but I'm here to answer, you know, any questions, any comments.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so I will open it up to the commissioners and staff for any questions of, uh, Mr. Karuka?
I have a question.
Uh, hang on, Norad, Janet had her hand up first. That'll do you. Go ahead, Janet.
Um, hi, thank you. Um, I was wondering if your, uh, septic system has been, um, serviced and, um, approved?
Yes, it has been.
And, um, you're planning on, um, paving most of this area? Is that correct?
Correct.
Where they have all, we have all the little, um, lines for cars?
Correct. Yep, on the plan.
Yeah, okay. And, and, um, where is this, where is the septic system?
It's behind the building, um, next to Dollar General's parking lot, where it used to be. It's, it's, we haven't changed anything on the septic system. We have it inspected and cleaned out.
Okay. And, um, what, since you're, um, doing new paving, what, um, provisions do you have for a stormwater drainage?
Um, let me see. If it's on the plans real quick. Give me one second, please.
Let me see if.
I don't see that on the, uh, plans, but I, I guess I would leave that up to the pavement company, whatever they, they recommend, we could go with that. I'm sure they, they would have a plan for the drainage.
And, um, what kind of lighting are you planning to put in?
Uh, there's, uh, lighting that's facing flat down from two sides of the building. And it's facing straight down because, uh, that's what the regulations in Ashford is, I guess.
And, uh, uh, how many hours a day do you plan to have lighting?
We would prefer to leave it overnight, but if there's a regulation, we could cut it off at a certain time. You know, it, it, it's just so, you know, when there's more lighting, there's less chances of, you know, theft or something.
What, um, and, and you, you mentioned you want to do some, um, work on cars? Are you doing mechanical work or service work?
Uh, well, we have to have a service in order to get a dealer's license from the state. So, um, we will not be 100% on public servicing, but you know, the state reg- regulates that we have to have a service for our cars.
And, and what does that include?
Um, basic maintenance, uh, uh, tire change, oil change, stuff like that. Nothing, you know, nothing, or nothing that's gonna pile up, uh, junk in the back or something. You know, nothing that's gonna leave, um, what do you call it? Eyesore from the road.
And what, what provisions do you have if you have an oil or transmission fluid spill on your property?
You know, usually we, we own another dealership in Bloomfield, Connecticut, and it's usually small spills that you could use Quick Dry to suck it up real quick. You know, you don't see 100 gallons of oil spilling. Usually oil, oil tanks have coverage on the bottom of it, like a basket, uh, catch, catch-on baskets, so you don't see anything on the floors.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Janet?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, Norad, you spoke up. Luther jumped ahead of you, but I'm gonna go with Norad. Norad, go ahead.
Yeah, are you gonna have any, uh, services available to the public for automotive service?
Um, we don't plan on do, opening it to public, but if, you know, if someone breaks on the road or something, we'll give them a quick hands just to help the community. Besides that, it's not gonna be fully open for public. It's gonna be mostly for our cars. You know, if someone has a flat in front of us or something, you know, we'll, we'll rather give them a hand rather than have them wait for AAA for the next two hours or something, you know?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Norad. Luther?
Thanks, Jeff. Um, the question was, uh, was this a previously approved use for this lot? Uh, when this was previously a service station and auto?
Yes.
And, and so I guess my question might be more of an administrative question, which is that, and I, I may be wrong on this, but I thought that the use stayed with the lot, not with the owner, and that if this was a previously approved use, and this is the same use that was previously approved, then the permit, the per, the use should still be valid. And I'm, I guess I'm just wondering why we're having to review an application for an already permitted use at this location?
If, if that's a question to me, I.
That's more of a question, uh, that's more of a question, you know, an administrative question for either, either Jeff or Mike or, or somebody as to if this is a previously permitted use at this location, then wouldn't it continue to be a permitted use at this location?
I, I can jump in, um, so.
Excuse me. Uh, Luther, but previously it was a gas station and they did oil changes, but they never, uh, to my knowledge, sold cars there. But they did repairs and, uh, oil changes and sold gas. Um, I don't ever remember seeing, uh, cars for sale there. So that would be something new.
Mike, did you want to, uh, elaborate at all?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo that. There were components of the current use that, or proposed use that mirror what had been done many years ago, not, but also components of it that are new. Um, so there is a, obviously been a substantial period of time since that's been conducted, but because this doesn't include the service, the, the, the gas component, it includes service, but, but is primarily, you know, a dealership. Um, and there's really not a lot of information in the file to get a good, accurate representation of the scope and intensity. Uh, so that's why they're coming back before the commission.
Okay, those are all great answers. I just wanted to, to make sure that we were, you know, that I understood that, uh, before moving on. Um, so then there's, there's only a couple other things that, you know, come to mind for me. Uh, one is on the plan, I don't see any, uh, provisions made for, um, you know, dumpsters or solid waste storage or anything like that. Uh, I totally understand and respect the desire to maximize usable space, uh, so that you can, uh, you know, best, uh, meet your bottom line, but I, I just, that's something that we would typically see and require to have, you know, screened containment for, um, solid waste storage. And then, uh, just to circle back to what Janet was asking about with, with stormwater management, um, again, because we do now have a newly disturbed area and we're looking at increasing the impervious surface. Um, I, I think there should probably be some engineering put into, uh, stormwater management for this so that we don't end up with problems of just sheeting water into the, uh, Dollar General parking lot and having, you know, conflict that, that arises between, you know, property of butters. Um, so those would be my comments. I'd like to see a site plan inclusive of, um, you know, drainage provisions, um, and, um, solid waste storage. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Luther. Mark? I, I wanted to reiterate a few of the comments by both Janet and Luther. Um, I mean, it appears from the drawing that there's about 38 parking spots. Is that correct?
Correct.
So again, I didn't do the math, but you know, it looks like we're probably around the 80% lot coverage of impervious surface between asphalt and building. Do you know what the percentage is of, uh, lot coverage between, uh, the building and impervious surface?
Um,
and the map I was looking at seemed like it was quite ancient, probably from the original plan. I also didn't see any wetlands listed on that, on the map, you know, may not be on your property, but I'm curious about, you know, wetlands on a butter's property. Because I know, I know that property does run into the Mount Hope River.
Yeah, we, we try to keep old plan that was, um, that was, that they had pavement. We try to use whatever the old layout was. I'm not 100% sure on how, what the percentage is, but we didn't, we're not planning on paving any additional spaces. So whatever the old pavement was that's on there right now, you can kind of tell from the, you know, graphs from the old payments. That's what we were, we were planning on paving.
And are there currently in the shop itself, the two-bay garage? Are there currently floor drains?
Uh, let me ask real quick. No, there, there's no floor drains on, in the shop right now.
Okay. And there's no plan to install floor drains?
No.
Okay. Uh, and I heard talk about, you know, redoing the facade, but I didn't see any, um, explanation of what, what was gonna be changed on the facade of the building, you know, aesthetically, what's the building gonna look like? Um, explanation of what what was gonna be changed on the facade of the building, you know, aesthetically, what's the building gonna look like?
The building will not change much. We're we're just gonna, we're just gonna paint it, and then there's gonna be a signage which was submitted, I believe. Um, it's gonna be.
So it's gonna stay a cinder block painted building?
Correct. So we're planning on doing a darker color, like dark shade of gray or black. And then um, there's gonna be sign signage in front of the front door and the front window on the office side. Two by sixteen was the uh, the measurements approximately for the signage. I I could send the photo over to uh, to the group right now if you. I just have something mocked up. I I believe I submitted that it with the plans.
I think that's all I have for uh. Questions right now.
Okay, tha- thank you, Mark. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um. Uh, what would be your procedures or arrangements for the disposal of oil, gas, solvents, antifreeze and such? Uh, and you know, what type of controls would you have on that besides quick dry or kitty litter?
For we, you know, for the old oil that comes out of the car, we put them back into the barrels and then a shop, you know, the company comes out and pumps them out.
So you have a disposal uh, group you work with for getting rid of that and uh. What and what about things like solvents and antifreeze and all that? All those things are uh.
Yeah, they're all separated. They're all separated into barrels and then a company comes and pumps them out. Small barrels, not, you know, not underground things or anything.
Um, how will your cars come to you? Will they be? Delivered to you? Will they be coming?
Ninety percent of them will be driven from the east uh, East Windsor Southern Auto Auction. Ten percent of them might come from online auctions and then, you know, get shipped to us, but that's a very small portion of it.
As and and thank and thank you for the answer, because my question was unclear. Um. So as opposed to where they originate from, I'm thinking about how are they? You said they're driven there is what you said, as opposed to delivered on a large uh, transport truck or something like that. Because my can, my concern was a large transport truck trying to manipulate and maneuver. Um, not only into your lot, but not impeding traffic while it was trying to do that.
Yeah, due to all the shipping costs and stuff, we try, we, you know, we buy. Probably ninety five percent of our cars and from the tri-state, so it's u- usually small. Uh, three car trailers that brings it over to us, but that again, that's probably ten percent of our inventory. Versus, you know, ninety ninety percent will be uh, driven over from Southern Auto Auction in East Windsor.
My other question, uh. Have you done any type of engineered traffic study or anything? Um, again, uh. My concern shows and I do have a uh, I'm gonna. Mike, can you let me share something here or can I just share it?
One second. Okay.
Okay, so. This is whoops, now I screwed it up. There we go. What's going on? What am I doing wrong, Mike?
We see the map.
Oh, you see it?
We can see a screenshot like a image viewer.
Good, I'm glad you can see it because I can't right now. And I don't know why. Let me extend, let me open up my screen here. You're still seeing that?
Yeah.
Okay, so anyways, I'll do my best from what I remember seeing. So over to the right is your building. Um, uh, in in its current state and its distance from the uh, intersection. Uh, which does involve the right-hand curve yield uh, road coming down uh, forty four. Uh, towards the uh, current gas station that's there, the extra mart. Um, so again, uh. The concern I have is your access and egress uh, through that area. Um, a couple of things come to mind with the possibility of not having a left turn. Allowed coming out of your driveway. Um, the one, because you have the one access, right? The one area to go in and out of, because everything else will have parking lot and cars and such on the other side?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so again, my concern is that uh, uh, the difficulty, and I know uh, there are members on the commission that. Uh, live a little farther up the road there at the uh, um, Southworth. Um, where it's difficult enough with traffic as opposed to coming in and out that close to the intersection. Um, so I'd be encouraged by some type of an engineered traffic study based on what you feel will be your traffic flow in and out of there. And uh, what uh, the result would be on that. Um, and again, the potential for not having a left, whether that would solve anything, again, I'm going over my head here, but whether a no left-hand turn. Out of there would help with any of the congestion at that intersection, uh, especially in the uh, business hours. Um, also, I believe in our regs and uh, Mike, I know you don't have them memorized, but uh. For the entrance and exit of driveways, I believe the maximum width. Um, is twenty four feet and you have yours at twenty nine point six, I see, in your uh, plan. Which, you know, more room might be better, but again, our regs do indicate that it's a uh, twenty four feet.
Maximum?
Maximum, yes. And that's under three hundred dash thirty one eight in our uh, regs. I'm sorry, B eight in our regs.
Okay. Uh, even though the entrance is, you know. It's on there right now. We haven't, you know, changed anything on the layout of the property. Do you need us to shorten the entrance?
Well, that's it's. It it's just, but the commission may modify this. I mean, it says with width and radius limitations to facilitate traffic flow and safety, so if we feel. That it's safer to have it wider like that for entrance and exit, then, you know, we have the ability to change that. Um. And uh. Mark already brought this up also. Um, we're trying to do some things in Ashford. And they, and I can honestly say, I'll be very straightforward to you. We don't have a requirement of this in our regs. But we would really like to try to increase the curb appeal. Uh, going down seventy four, our main drag on the state and forty four. I mean, too many pillboxes. Too many um, industrial looking buildings and such. Um, you know, paint is one thing. Um, I'd ask, I'd ask you for curb appeal and maybe fitting into. What other groups have met with us such as Cumberland Farms and Dollar General. Um, uh, Zen Leaf, Pith Products, uh, those are two of the.
Very companies compared to us, but.
I I understand, I understand the size, but you know, I I'm even thinking about, you know, even a uh, some type of a uh. Inexpensive but tasteful siding, um, uh, a a fake gable or something on the top, so it's just not a a flat roof up there. You know, um, something that uh, and you know, shutters on uh, any windows or anything, something along the. Uh, classic New England colonial type of look, uh, as opposed to, like I said, a uh. World War Two pillbox uh, to uh, uh, shoot machine guns out of, which many of our. Buildings, too many of our buildings look like that along seventy four and forty four, so it's a request of you to kind of. Look at that as best you can. Um.
You know, the more attractive the building looks, the better for us too. I would, I could, you know, honestly, it it cost us, this is gonna cost us way more than what we were thinking about, but. That building has been sitting there for fifteen, twenty years as an eyesore. I would gu- guarantee you it will look much better than what it looks like right now. But, you know, I'll I'll keep that in mind to see if we could do it. You know, a little better than what we were thinking about doing.
I I I I and I know ma- many of the citizens would appreciate that, so um, you know, as we move forward, should, you know, should there be uh, full acceptance on this? Um, I'm just looking through my notes here, uh. Yeah, again, uh, again, for me. Very concerned about that intersection, very concerned about the additional traffic, the egress and access in and out. Um, and what that would cause at that intersection, um.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just wanted to comment on it, you know, we're gonna have probably. If so, thirty five cars on the lot, that means probably five to seven customers a day, you know? Compared to Dollar General, the gas station across the street, I don't know how much five to seven. Additional traffic means for that, you know, for that traffic that in the, at that intersection. I agree, it's seven more cars that's gonna drive through, but. We have Dollar General right next to us in the same intersection. That probably pulls, you know, six hundred cars, it requires a day.
Yeah, and they have lots of money and they did do an entry, and they did do a uh, traffic study uh, before we had that go in, so you know, we fully understand that. Um, okay, uh. Any other questions from the commission? Mark, use your hand up again.
Yeah, yeah, I had, I had a couple additional questions.
Okay.
Since you mentioned that the majority of your cars are gonna be coming from the auction. Um, I'm I'm very familiar with this business. Frequently auction cars require some bodywork. Whether that minor or major. Um, so are you planning on doing any type of bodywork?
No, we have a company in a locally, uh, that's gonna be right, it well, we have a company in East Hartford that we outsource all the bodywork to. That we will prob- we'll use the same company. You know, before we drop it over to our lot, we'll drop it off to them and then pick it up from East Hartford and bring it to over to Ashford afterwards.
Okay, and you mentioned about storage of oil and antifreeze? Are you planning on, are you planning on stor- storing? The oil and antifreeze in containment vessels inside the building or outside the building?
Um, those will be inside the building in a spill kit. There's a, there's a spill kit that the company provides. It's it's one barrel at a time. It's not, you know, it's not thousands of gallons at a time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the commission?
Uh, Jeff, uh, like yourself, I'm con- concerned about the traffic. Uh, as you know, uh, it's known as Crash Corner. Uh, there's accidents there uh, several a week and uh. Like you said, uh. Maybe restricting it to a right-hand turn out of there, out of there would probably be a good idea. And uh. So uh, that that's uh, my only concern.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Okay, so with nothing else from the commission, I see no other hands up electronically or otherwise. I'll go to opening up to the public, again, asking you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. And please state your name and address before uh, speaking, once called on. Uh, Christina Sebo, electronic hand, go right ahead, you're on mute right now.
Hi, thank you, Christina Sebo, ninety one Perry Hill Road, Ashford. Um, a couple of things, um, you said it, the building has been an eyesore for a number of years. Actually, before you took off the mural, it was considered quite cute by a lot of us because the um. Uh, Ashford Area Arts Council painted it with that pretty mural, so it's an eyesore after you remove the the mural. Um, in terms of septic, so the septic system has been in there for. God only knows, how long? How many decades has it been in there? How many decades old is it?
I don't know the age of it, but we have it inspected and they threw a camera in there too. Everything functions as it should.
As it should, for what purpose? Are there regulations about what kind of septic system is required for a garage? Um, service station that may be different now than they were forty or fifty years ago? Do we know that and is that something we need to be concerned with?
There's nothing special required from the state side of it. Uh, it's, there's no drainage in the garage, so there's, there's nothing special. For the septic.
Well, except that people wash hands and wash tools and things like that, so there is. Stuff that goes into a septic system from your type of operation. I'm just concerned that the septic system is so old as to not be really compliant for that kind of usage. Um, that's, so that's a question. The second thing.
Can can I just quickly interject? This is Luther.
Thank you, Luther. Go ahead. I I know what you're gonna say.
Am I misremembering that during public comment, we're we're not really doing a question and answer to the applicant from?
That is, that is correct. It should be all question, questions and statements should be directed to the board, to the chair and to the board, correct.
And and that the applicant's not obligated to answer questions from the public.
Not at that time, correct.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I I I should have, I should have popped on that. I was actually looking at something here, so uh, thank you, Luther.
Yeah, sorry, Luther. I sort of was asking the commission, but um. In terms of drainage from the lot, so um, the applicant stated that. It would be left to the paving company to design drainage off of the parking lot with thirty five parking spaces and at least that many cars quite often. Um, I don't know whether we have requirements for the paving companies, but if you look at the, the lot. On the bottom of the town hall, so for the the basement of the town hall, if you look at the drainage. That though, that paving company put in, there are two drainage basin things that go right. Into the Mount Hope River with a really nice angle for everything to flow into them. So I'm not sure I'm real comfortable with a paving company. Doing that kind of judgment call. Um. I don't know if we can make, make some kind of um. Uh, request or or something to to make a better system be assured. Um. Okay, one last question. You keep talking about a company that will come get your old oil and old antifreeze and old stuff. Can you tell us the name, oh, can can we find out the name of the company? And whether there have been any incidents with that company over the last five or six or seven years? Um, in terms of pollution or whatever, whatever. Um, because I think it might be appropriate to vet that company if that's gonna be the company that's gonna be running this show. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. Uh. Charles Viddick.
Oh, yes, um, well, thanks for the opportunity to speak to this Charles Viddick, Forty Frontage Road in Ashford. I didn't look at the application, but I will say just a couple of comments. I agree with Janet Bellamy. Um, a stormwater management plan really should be considered. Uh, especially if it's a direct discharge from the parking area. Um, and I know, as far as I'm aware, uh, Ashford doesn't have stormwater management uh, regulations. Uh, fifty three towns in Connecticut do have that, mostly the ones that are the. MS four program, the municipal separate storm sewer system regulation. Ashford isn't currently in it, but ultimately will be. Um, so for the protection of the water quality, yes, a stormwater management plan would be appropriate, particularly a detention system. Um, or retention uh, would be appropriate. Uh, the second is to the septic system, I do know the Public Health Code. Um, and it currently does not have standards for labeling what goes into the septic system from the sinks. That are not uh, floor drains. I've recommended that to the Public Health Code Advisory Group as an idea. They thought it was a good one, but obviously they haven't done it. Uh, that's typically a very good best practice uh, to do. Uh, which the town can actually require. In other words, a label that says this is not for discharge. Of uh, chemicals uh, through toilets or sinks, even though they're not floor drains, that's a very good best practice. Uh, wearing my transportation hat. Um, curb cut, if the curb cut currently exists there, then authorized by DOT. If the curb cut currently exists there, then authorized by DOT because it's a state highway. One of the things that the town may want to consider. Uh, when you have a budding properties. Uh, a best practice is to combine the. Entrance exit way for a budding properties to have only one curb cut. And have the access for Dollar General to be the same access for this particular proposal. Uh, that is one way to reduce. The problem with an excessive number of curb cuts on state highways. That's one of the goals of the state highway system. Is to minimize curb cuts on state highways. So that is something that would require. The applicant to determine whether Dollar General is willing to do that. But that is a solution. That is often done in many locations. Uh, to minimize the kind of traffic issues that we're. Uh, talking about here. I would also recommend in that regard. The University of Connecticut on behalf of the state of, uh, DOT. As a safety. A database that shows every accident that happens every day that's reported. And I've used that database in Mansfield to assist the town in determining what the real traffic concerns are. Uh, with curb cuts and lighting and what have you. I'd highly recommend looking at that database to see just how many of those accidents are occurring. And what are the causes? In other words, are there left-turning movements that are causing that problem? Uh, that can be very useful. It's the kind of thing that's often a supplement to a, a transportation. Uh, traffic engineering study is a supplement to it because that gives you a real handle on what is the root cause where these accidents are coming from. Uh, and that's the kind of thing I would say is useful to the point made earlier about having a traffic study. Uh, you supplement it with the safety data and you can, uh, go in yourself and actually look at it or have a consultant do it. Cause that allows you to determine whether you really do have. A serious traffic safety problem and whether the, uh, prohibited on left turn is the issue or whether having one. Curb cut for two facilities is an option. These are just thoughts. But these are ideas that work in many places, but really a stormwater management plan. Uh, may not have been required. In most towns twenty years ago. In fact, none of this is, it's all post MS four program where we're seeing this in Connecticut. And since, um. We're in the one town that has the most watershed, public watershed by watershed lands, stormwater management plan of some sort, or at least an, an ability to. Control the discharge of potential chemicals. Uh, even if they're not within the building, any, any car that comes in that has a leaking oil and is in the parking lot. Discharges into the water supply. So I think there's a real value to what Janet, Janet Bellamy had said about the stormwater issues and that. I would say that, that would be helpful. I mean, I, I have no problem with the project as a whole. We do need to reuse our properties in town to the maximum extent possible, but. We should obviously use best practices. So thank you for the opportunity just to share these thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Viddick. Any other public comment? Uh, Luther.
Hey, Jeff, thanks. I just also did want to point out, you know, we have talked a fair bit about, um. Stormwater management and, uh, various things like that, that we would normally see depicted on an engineered site plan. And I'm not sure if everyone on the commission and, and quite likely. Uh, public is aware, but there, there was. A waiver application that was part of the narrative for this application, uh, that we're discussing at the public hearing tonight. So there was a waiver request. Uh, uh, to the commission in, in the narrative to waive the requirement for a site plan. So. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that and that that might. That, that request and, and absence of the site plan, I think is probably what is. Um, causing a lot of our, our, our discussion tonight and, uh. You know, that, that waiver certainly hasn't. Been granted or anything at, at this point, but I just, I thought it might be nice for people to understand that. Perhaps that's why the applicants don't have, um, some of the things that we're talking about tonight is that they were pursuing that waiver.
Thank you, Luther. Janet.
Um, yes, in, um. In regards to stormwater, um, we, we do have section three hundred dash thirty-one is best management practices for runoff. Um, it has a lot of, uh, discussion on, um, a storm, uh, what to do with stormwater. Uh, parking lot drainage shall be designed so that all surface runoff. Is conveyed through vegetative swales and so forth, um. I, I don't know how it works with, uh, doing the waiver, but I think. This section should definitely be followed. Um, I don't want to put undue. Regulations on the, the business, but, um. A- as Charles Viddick said, we are on a, uh, a, uh, watershed and, um, uh. St- stormwater is, is an important pollutant to, to, um, our, our clean water. So I, I'm not quite sure how that works, but I, I would like that, um. To be completed before we, um. You know, proceed with, um, approving this.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Um, some more discussion, uh. Okay, uh. Seeing no other input from the commissioners or the public, I will ask for, um. The, uh, applicant to. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Hassan. I didn't see you waving there. Go ahead, Mr. Kuruka. You're on mute, sir.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Hassan with two, two, one, Pape Hall Road as well. So this is, uh, second shop we, we're gonna have. We have another shop in Connecticut, uh, Longfield, Connecticut, which has over a hundred cars in the. Uh, inventory. The, uh, as a coverage of the, um, asphalt. We did not increase any impervious area for what was previously being asphalted. This is, um. We, we, we tried to kept the same as what was, as a gas station back in the day. And we, we tried to use the same area as the asphalt area. And then another thing is. As a, uh, traffic concern. As a gas station alone, you know, you have. At least a thousand, maybe five hundred to fifteen hundred people entering it daily versus. Three to five people are entering it daily in a car lot. Is it kind of less of a chance of? Having an accident? This, you know, this e- even as a coffee shop. You know, as if this was a Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, you will, you'll have at least three to five hundred people entering daily. Versus, you know, three to five people entering daily at a dealership.
Anything else?
That, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Luther, go ahead.
Hey, Jeff. Um, so I'm just seeking clarification then on the, uh, paved. Impervious section, uh, and, and my earlier comment. Uh, that spoke to the expansion of, uh, the paved area. Uh, was because if, if you look at your, your submitted documents that show the original site survey. Um, the, the. Delineated end of paving as called out on that plan. Uh, runs parallel to and not behind. The building. And when, when we look at. The submitted proposed site layout. Uh, we have. Uh, about two and a quarter spaces. Um, of, of parking that's carrying beyond the back. Line of the building. So I just need clarification as to. Uh, the position as to whether the paving is going to be. Kept parallel to the back of the building as depicted in the original site plan, or are you going to pave two spaces behind the building?
No, we, we get, we're gonna keep it as what was previously was at. The rest will be still a gravelled area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um. Anything else from the applicant?
No, no other concerns.
Okay, um. I guess coming away from this, you know, we do have the. As Luther pointed out, we do have the request of a, um. Waiver on the, uh. Engineered site plan. And. The issues that have been brought up do. Cause some concern when it comes to stormwater management and letting the paving company. Put something out there when they are not necessarily held to any standard. Um, and you know what that leads to with the, uh, uh, the drainage. I think, uh, Luther's other point regarding, uh. The, uh, solid waste and, uh, screen containment for any type of, uh, material, again, trying to. Keep that at bay, keep that covered because things do accumulate, obviously, at any location. We, we fully understand that. I guess at this point, would you be, uh, willing to provide us with, uh? Some type of further information regarding the impervious surface, the, uh, the. The paving plan and the runoff and such, um, if we were to continue this hearing, uh, into next month? And if you didn't have it by then, you could always ask for a continuance also.
Yes, yes, uh, if, if it's gonna be required, yeah, we'll work on it for next month's meeting.
Okay, and, um, we'll have Mike send you, uh, some of the, so it's clear, we'll have him send to you some of the things. Uh, in a memo or email that, you know, identifying what the commission's looking for. That will be helpful, I think.
Yep.
Janet.
Uh, yes, could we also have, um, a copy of the report from the, uh, septic? Uh, system. Uh, of.
Of course, it was a county line septic that, that did the inspection, so. I could, I could send over the report if you guys needed it.
Actually, actually, one thing I would ask of you is because of the age of the system, uh, I've been here thirty-five years and never saw it operating as a system. Um. Is it possible, and that doesn't, shouldn't cost you anything, could, uh? We'd like to have a request of Eastern Highlands to inspect the system as a, um. Nonpartisan, uh, group to look at it and make sure that they feel it's functional and doing the job it needs to do after thirty-five some odd years.
I'm sorry, Jeff. Say that one more time?
It's Eastern Highlands Health District. It's a local health district group that covers us and usually does the, uh, uh, inspections when it's a new site. Uh, if it's a new home going in or anything like this and does the proper inspection for the volume inspected and such, uh, for a septic system going in. I'm sorry, Hassan.
Uh, country line septic actually did the, uh, all the tests and they inspected and they, uh, they pumped it out, which were, it was just dry in there. And they are, they actually, uh, installed the risers as well to keep it, uh, in a better condition and easier to pump it out. If, you know, any of the inspectors will go by there, they'll be able to see what's being done to it.
Okay, well, then, like I said, if you can arrange with, with, uh, Eastern Highlands, again, it won't cost you anything. And that would be.
That's not a problem.
That, that would carry a lot of weight with the commission as you have concerns on a thirty-five-year-old, thirty-five-year-old or more system.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes, Jerry.
I believe that building was there when I came to Ashford, which was fifty years ago.
Sixty?
Fifty years ago.
Fifty, okay.
I'm not that old yet.
Well. Yeah, but somebody was actively in there, so hopefully they were actively using the system as opposed to something that sat there for my, at least my thirty-five years. I mean.
But it sat empty for a lot of years.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, uh, we do have a concern, obviously. That's really what the commission's getting about. Again, something that isn't costly to you at all and, uh. If you can arrange that, it would be, again, carry a, uh, quite a bit of weight to allay our, allay our fears. So. So, uh.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
So before, it sounds like obviously the commission has asked some additional questions of the applicant. They're gonna come back next month, which means the public hearing will be continued. But I think something that would be useful, we've kind of kicked it around and, um. To Luther's point, they've requested the waiver of the A two survey. And so. I think the commission wants to sort of land on that. Because you don't want to have to make that decision at the next meeting, right? That's just gonna sort of, we lose thirty days. So they. They can certainly provide information related to the extent of paving, current. Uh, coverage, um, uh, any, any other issues or, or plan for paving and stormwater, all those things. Information can be provided to the commission at the next meeting. It's not necessarily, uh. How do I say this? They don't need to have the A two to be able to provide that information. So I think the commission should clarify. If they're comfortable with the information or if they feel like, and therefore can go forward with the waiver at the next meeting. Just so that they don't lose and come back in September and then find out that that's what your expectation was.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, understood. Um, then I'll put this out to the, uh, members at this point. Uh, if, uh, provided with the type of information that we provide to Mike, who will provide it to the applicant. Um, are we comfortable with waiving the full, uh? Uh, A two. Um, engineering plan if provided with the information that we've asked for?
Is, is this something we're gonna vote on in the, we have to vote on this, right? Cause we have to hit seventy percent. To. Grant. Correct?
Oh, Grant, well, we're in the hearing right now. We would have.
Right, so I guess I, I was asking, is, is this something we're gonna have to discuss and vote on? Once we leave the hearing?
I, I think that you. You don't necessarily need to take action on it now. It can become part of the decision at some point, but if, if there's. A concern and people feel like, you know, they're not comfortable going forward with the waiver because the hearing is gonna stay open. Just trying to give them some direction so they can come back as prepared as necessary for the next meeting. So I guess I would say if each of the commissioners sort of. Gives their position on where they, they stand, then the applicant will have a sense of, of where that. The decision on the, the waiver will go.
So, taking a vote, I guess without taking a vote, I mean, I'm, I'm really just trying to get a handle on, you know, is the commission comfortable? With such a waiver? Um. Provided the. Information we ask for is provided to us at the next hearing. Um, and to our satisfaction, obviously. So as opposed to giving them a, you know, an indication to do this and then come back and pull the rug out and say, no, you need to do the A two fully.
So, from, from my perspective, so the, the waiver request was not to specifically waiver an A two survey. The, the request was. Waiver of us, of an engineered site plan. Um, not, not. The request of wavering, uh, waiver of an A two survey. So. To, to my. From my perspective. I, I don't, I don't understand how. The commission will be presented with. A, a, a robust stormwater management plan or, or anything like that that will involve engineering. Um, you know, there's not gonna be a, uh. It's unlikely that you'll get a, a contractor that's gonna want to come in and, and design and install. Um, a stormwater management plan for this site without engineering. And so. When you begin to need. Plans to understand elevations and discharge and rate and studies and all those things, we're talking about a site plan now because the only way to actually execute. Um, a, a drainage system installation on a property like this, especially one that is size constrained like this is, is to have. A site plan. So if the commission. Thinks that it wants to see a stormwater management plan, I don't know how. I don't know how a stormwater management plan can exist at the same time as granting an exemption for a site plan. And I'm, I'm not trying to advocate, I'm not trying to, you know.
No, 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 no.
I'm simply trying to say that I, I don't know how both of these things exist at the same time in the same space. Um, and you know, I, I think it's, it would be unfair to tell the applicant, so yeah, sure, here's your, here's your waiver, we all feel comfortable giving you a waiver. You don't need to go survey this, we understand what it is. And also, how are they supposed to successfully execute a stormwater management plan without a site plan?
Without the, without the engineering. Uh, Hassan, you raised your hand?
Yes, um. One thing, uh, we don't have to uh asphalt the whole thing, we just. Decided, think that it will look nicer and cleaner to have it asphalted like what it was before. I do have a uh layout from the Kirkoff uh paving. Uh, what it was like before and what it will be as the uh size of the asphalt, but if we have to. You know, do it less, that's not a problem as well. Because all we have to do is, you know, parking in a gravel or asphalt, the same thing to us, we just looked at, we just thought that, you know. For as a curb appeal, it will look nicer and cleaner.
Guys, I just shared the uh, the plan from the Kirkoff on the chat, if you guys wanna take a look at it, that's, that's how it's currently paved as well.
That, that was the old plan, how it was done, but we, we can, we can, you know. Size the asphalt to the front line of the building if, if, if it needs to be, that's not a problem either. Like I said, you know, it's, it's actual cost us, that will be even better.
Uh, Mark?
Um, yeah, I just wanna make a comment to Hassan, so if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly. If you don't asphalt the entire area, then you're gonna put stone down, but still use it for parking.
Correct. That way, uh, the, you know, the tray, it will, it will just suck into the ground instead of just going through the asphalt.
Right, so either way, we're still gonna cover the lot, you know, approximately eighty percent with uh. Either, you know, between vehicles and building. It's just what's gonna be underneath some of the cars.
You know, if, if we do from the front line of the building, that's about sixty percent of the area.
No, I understand exactly what you're proposing. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners, uh, if Luther's comments?
And so. Just briefly again. Mike, um, I'm looking for some insight. Because from, from, and this is just my perspective, from my perspective, um. And, and, and also, like, I'm, I'm really, I'm so, I'm very sorry, guys, I'm, I'm really not trying to beat up on you, I just wanna make sure we get this right. I, um. Paved, not paved. We still have this use and we still have. Um, potential risks that we need to mitigate in terms of stormwater runoff, right? When, when we have a heavy rain event, uh compacted gravel versus pavement, water moves across them in a really similar fashion. I'm not an engineer, but I've fixed a lot of roads, I've fixed a lot of drainage. Um, and, and water moves across the surface in a very similar fashion, and we actually can see. More problems with unpaved surfaces with scouring and depositing the, the, those surfaces into the neighboring properties and all of these other things, so I'm just. Concerned about. Um. You know, how this is all gonna unpack if, if um. With, with the, with this, with this surface, and I know that this was a. Developed lot twenty-five years ago and we weren't thinking about these things, but that doesn't, I think, preclude us from thinking about them now.
Um, another question, it, it, since the Dollar General built recently. Do we have any idea of what they, they use as, as storm drainage? Did they tilt, looks like their property is tilted to the back, draining to the back of the property? Am I correct on that?
If I remember right, they did a lot of fill back on their property in order to put in the building that they put in. Um, even though it does have significant drop off, I believe they did a lot of fill to level that out and get a larger um usable lot. Am I off on that? Does anyone remember?
I think you're correct.
You're correct, you're correct, Jeff.
So, um, you know, they build that lot up uh from where they were, uh. And off the top of our heads, no, I don't, I don't think we have a, a handle on what their requirement is, but. We're kind of not talking about Dollar General, we're talking about your application.
Yeah, I, I know, it, it just that, you know, they look like their lot is tilted kind of back that the drainage just, you know, while just. Flow flows to the back of the property. That could be done too, if that's possible for us to.
Well, and so I'm, I'm getting a feeling here, not hearing much from the uh other commissioners, but um. I think we'd be hard pressed right now, and Mike, wasn't there recently something that came out from the state with a recommendation for not waiving? Uh, engineered plans?
That was, um. More pertaining to as built, where certifying the location of something on the lot, sort of like at the end of a project. Um. So, when you know, at the, at the end of a new construction or something, we, we want them to tell us where the building is with relation to the lot. So it was about the level of certification.
Um, okay.
So, and I think that there's, there's a couple of different things that, that the commission has been talking about, and. Uh, I think they all fall under the, this, this term of stormwater, but not, they're not all the same. Exact thing, one of them is how the water flows when. When it rains and that rain falls on the property, and that could be done through topography. But, you know, where does that raindrop go? Is it, is it, does it interact with asphalt? Does it interact with gravel? Are there catch basins? Are there curbs? Is it sheet flow? Does the property pitch to the rear? Does it pitch to the front? Those are all sort of engineering things.
Questions, yeah.
That they can, that they can address with their pavement contractor, because the contractor come in and he can pitch the property to the rear, he can. Install curbs, he can leave breaks in the curb so that it can sheet flow, you know, in different areas. So that's sort of dealing with runoff, and there's this other component which is sort of. Cleaning water, and um. I do think that those are kind of two separate things, we've talked and heard about what's gonna happen inside the building, that there won't be drains. Um, and, and, you know, none of the vehicles are gonna be outside that are gonna, you know, the vehicles are gonna come to the property. Um, operating, which means they're not gonna be hulks or junked vehicles being left outside, leaking or vehicles. You know, a lot of times with, with similar operations, one of the big concerns, which is not the, the case here, is that these vehicles come as hulks. That have been in an accident, they're leaking fluids, and they need to be repaired, right? That's not gonna be the case here, but. Um. I think that if they're maintaining, they're coming in and saying the existing parking lot is eighty-five percent, eighty percent, seventy-five percent, whatever it is. If they're maintaining the current extent by which the property is covered. They're gonna be hard pressed to really be able to do very much in the way of cleaning water. Traditional stormwater management and, and treatment, because the lot's gonna stay as it is, they're not gonna be able to put. You know, any type of piping and whatever underneath to be able to capture the water, hold the water and clean it. Um, so there's gonna be certainly some limitations there. Um, so I don't wanna, I just don't wanna get into a situation where there's a. A gap in the expectation and what they're trying to answer for your next meeting, because their plan right now is, from what I can tell. Is to resurface the existing lot in its current layout, leave the curb cut, stripe it for spaces to have vehicles stored. And, you know, they'll, they'll, they're, they'll address some of the stormwater issues through how they pitch. The new pavement, but I don't think their, their plan, because there's no infrastructure on site. Is to install catch basins and, and stormwater input receptors and, and, you know, all of these other improvements, because they're not there. So I just wanna make sure that the commission and the applicant aren't talking past each other and we don't have an issue next month.
Um, so.
Yes, Janet.
Um, so are you, I'm, I don't know exactly what you're saying, are you saying that? We can't ask for those, that it's impossible, or? Um.
I think, I think Mike's trying to give them a, uh, somewhat of a clear-cut message that, you know, if we provide, if we provide them with the information that we're looking for. And uh, they are able to provide information that we deem acceptable, then. In doing so, we wouldn't require the site plan. Um, if they came back to us and things were not to our satisfaction, that next step. Would be a fully engineered site plan, I believe. And, you know, there, there, there'd be that delay, but we, we can't give a guarantee, because we don't know what you're gonna come back with, you know, and I, I can appreciate what Mike is putting out there. To not delay, you know, their activity, but, um, you know, they're asking for a waiver on something that we are comfortable with doing a waiver. Uh. So, you know, the best we can do is offer up, you know, this is what we're looking for, um, if you provide that. Uh, to our satisfaction. Then uh, the waiver of, now Luther's point obviously is that you can't do one without the other, um. And if I'm putting words in your mouth, Luther, sorry, um, but you can't. Get the information that we are looking for unless you do a fully engineered site plan. Is that close, Luther?
Well, it, it may or may not be, and I, I guess Mike's comments were, were good to contemplate. And, and I understand Mike's position, I think he was trying to share was that this is an existing building and parking lot. Uh, they're not looking to expand or modify the parking lot, they're just looking to resurface it. Um, and, and I, I, I think that's great and I get, I get all that, but the, the, the only thing that I come back to is that the use has changed where. Instead of this being something where we're. And I, I guess maybe the use change doesn't matter that much, because the sheeting was the sheeting and, and the risk of exposure is the risk of exposure. In terms of the, the, the water runoff, um, so, so maybe, you know. Maybe the site plan doesn't have to be as robust as, as. As what we're all contemplating, I, 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 I mainly actually just wanted to ask, um, you know, the, the request for waiver. Talks about a site plan, but it, when you look in our. Application requirements for, for these special permit uses, um, you know, I didn't see anywhere in the dialogue talking about. Um, storage for, you know, hazardous materials and, and things like that, which we, we asked for, we didn't see that sort of depicted and. And, and whatnot, and I, I haven't, I didn't see a waiver for the traffic report. And so I just wanted to ask if those waivers were, were omitted in error, or if those were supposed to also be part of the, the waiver request, or. Or if those are, are pending, or what the story is, because we, we do list those as requirements for special permit applications.
I didn't realize we, you know, we needed to do a traffic study, because it's. Yes, I, I understand it wasn't a dealership before, but it, it was, it was a gas station, so there was more traffic back in the day. Than, than the traffic we would have today, I guess my, my question at this point is, what if we don't pave? What if we leave it as is? I, it's, it's not gonna be pretty. But what if we leave it as is?
Well, I guess you tell us with the storm drainage, storm, I mean. It, it's your, it's your property.
Lot is there. It's, it's an existing, existing structure, existing parking lot.
We, we can filter it back a little bit if it needs to be. That way the water drainage goes into the, you know, back of the property, not on the street.
Well, that, that, that's one thing we have to clarify, because. I, I feel like everybody's on a different page, I, I feel like Janet is asking for a catch base where, where you clean the water too, and then push it back out. But that's, that's impossible, that's, that's, that's too much, that's.
And it's a limited area as well, it's a, you know, limited spot, it's not a, you know, one acre or two acre of a land that you. You know, you're gonna have enough space for a catch basin.
Hang on, Jerry, hang on, Jerry, Mark, you had a question or a statement?
I'm sorry about that, Jeff, I, I don't at the moment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, the paving that he's talking about is that how thick is the pavement? Because when you add pavement on top of other pavement, you're changing uh the height of the. Of the parking lot.
They, they will not add another paving on top of it, they will remove the existing one, they will, you know, make it nicer and then. And then, and then put in the whole new pavement. That way you're not, you're not getting no cracks or broken pieces in next year.
I didn't know if you were gonna just cap it, that's what I'm.
Yeah, no, no, then, yeah, like you said, yeah, it will, it will rise the structure as well, correct? But we, we're looking to remove what's there and then make it a nice, you know, good-looking pavement. Instead of, you know, mix of a dirt, you know, asphalt and mix things out there.
So, I think right now, without coming to an impasse, I think the best we can do is, you know, we can't give you a guarantee right now. With the hearing still open and moving forward and the questions we have, we can't give you a guarantee of waiving the uh. Site plan, however, we can provide you with the information we're looking for, thi- this is, this is me trying to be solemn. Uh, we can provide you with the information that we're looking for. And ask for you to provide that to us from, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, your, 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 uh, your pavement person. And some type of report and what they plan on doing with it, um, they, uh, the Eastern Highlands, as I said. You know, for the septic system and things like this, uh, and even the, as Luther indicated, the um. Solid waste and hazardous waste storage and things like that that are outlined.
The solid waste is easy, you know, it, it comes in courts, you know, oil or anything, it comes in courts and you get it as you use it. And then, uh, the, you know, metal, uh, dumpsters and, uh. Uh, drums will be what's in hold there, and Crystal Clean is the company who, you know, takes them and disposes them. Like, that's ninety percent of the site is done by the Crystal Clean.
So, again, um, you know, if we can, uh, through Mike, we can provide you with that, the best you can do is come back with the information we have, and if it meets our. Our inquiries, you know, what we're looking to find out, then, you know, the likelihood of the need for a site plan would be removed. Um, I don't know how comfortable the rest of the commission is on that, but I know we need to move forward here, uh, or we just. You know, stop the hearing now and, you know, go from this point, uh, Jerry.
Uh, about the paving again, uh, you know, the parking lot is, uh. Connects to this Route forty-four, so I imagine this DOT would be a little concerned about runoff. Going on to the road and, and, uh. And we're, you know, where the water's gonna go.
There's currently, you know, what's, where they're going, where it will be going, because, you know, it's been going the same way for many years. And uh, it, it's currently going where it's actually gonna go once the asphalt is done too. Now, there's some portion that does not have asphalt, other than that, it, it does have an asphalt, it's all broken and in pieces and cracked.
Okay.
How about, um, how, what if, what if we pitch it where the water goes behind the building? Is that okay with everybody?
So actually, what I was gonna jump in and say is I've been involved on a project in another town, which was a. Automotive-related use, and um, it was, they, something that might work here. Is if the site was pitched to the rear, and then they had a, a five or ten-foot planted filter strip. At the edge of the parking lot, so everything would sheet away from the road, and then there was a planted filter strip that was sort of. Maintained and designed. maintained and designed with certain plantings and with a constructed in such a way that when the water ran off of the site at the rear, um, it then interacted with this sort of planted landscape area. It didn't require catch basins and, and detention basins because you're not dealing with a large volume of water. But it provided an opportunity to slow the water down, um, it, a little bit of treatment and, um, cooling before it continued off the property. There's not much land behind the building here and there's, you know, there's no water course or anything that this is going to be conveyed to, but it would, it would give an opportunity to improve the quality of the water, but, but, you know, as it's leaving the site, compared to what's there now. Um, so that's something I, I, we could explore between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
So again, I don't want to, um, jump to any conclusions for the commission on here. Um, I think, you know, the, the plan to try and provide them with our direction and what we're looking for and allow them to come back and tell us what they did. Um, for that would lead to whether we can provide that waiver. Um, whatever it is, 70, 75%, two thirds, two thirds, 30, three quarters of the, uh, members, um, for that waiver. Uh, are you gentlemen comfortable with that?
Yes.
Mike, do you think that's something we can provide to them?
Yeah, I, I, I will, uh, try to synthesize this and if all else fails, I'll make sure that the recording of the meeting is up ASAP.
Okay. Okay. So we will continue this hearing into, uh, now, I'm sorry, Mark, before we close, yes?
Uh, yeah. Could I just ask a quick, quick question? Can we ask for a rendering of what the facade will look like when completed? And what's, what's the building going to look like when it's done?
Oh, I think you have a, a picture of it, a mockup, right?
I do have.
Can you share it in the chat?
In the chat, yeah.
We really can't share it in the chat because then others can't see it for our public hearing.
Well, for that, for the next meeting, could we have a?
Yeah, that'd be fine. That'd be absolutely fine.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, we will close, or excuse me, we will continue the hearing into next month. That date is September 8th. Is, uh, the date for our next meeting. And, uh, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and, uh, we will be in touch.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good night.
Okay, moving on to our second public hearing. Uh, PZ dash 25 dash two text amendment application to establish section 300 dash 202 as a 20, 20, no, 20.2 as a new special development district known as the planned rural development district, uh, planning and zoning commission as the applicant. So, uh, this is a continuation of the hearing from last month. Uh, we have a couple of things to share. Um, uh, Mike, do you want me to go through the responses and clarifications or did you wish to?
Whatever you prefer. If you want me to go through them, I can pull them up, um, or I can.
Okay. Well, why don't you pull them up and we'll, uh, go through them and discuss them.
Okay.
So again, our responses from the last, uh, hearing session, uh, are really in response, again, in response to those questions or general questions. It wasn't, uh, question per question, answer per answer, but it was just some coverage of some, uh, common themes that came out through the input, especially the public comment that.
Is this large enough?
Uh, yeah, I can see it. Everyone else? Plenty big. Yep, that's fine. Covers everything.
Do you want, do you want me to run through them? Do you want to run through them? I don't think, I don't, whatever, what's easier for you?
Um, I'll start running through them. That's fine. So, uh, revisions to the proposed draft, uh, these are again, in response to the comments made during the 2000, the July 14th, public hearing amendments have been made to the proposed draft and are shown in the red line copy that we will also throw up, uh, in a little bit. Uh, process and purpose of special development district versus special permits. Uh, and again, these are points that, uh, we have brought up before. We're reiterating it in response to those comments that were made. The primary goal of establishing this regulation is to establish a more thorough and incremental review process. The current special permit process does not afford the commission with the same level of discretion and control over the placement, design, location and size of a project or buildings as the special development district process does. The PRDD process benefits the town as it affords the commission with the opportunity to work with developers on an incremental basis, rather than having to consider a fully designed project with a single application. The PRDD process benefits the property owner, developer, slash developer, because it allows them to approach the commission and begin the approval and design process without having to commit significant resources to preparing their fully engineered plans that may or may not align with the commission's intent for the parcel zone, et cetera, we're talking about. The PRDD process includes more opportunities for members of the public also to follow the process, participate in hearings, review submitted plans, et cetera. Uh, there are actually four bites at the apple as opposed to a single public hearing in our special permitting process. Their opportunity to speak about the development of a specific, specific site as well as the type of development being proposed are part of the PRDD process, just as they would be for a traditional zone change or special permit application. Um, again, one of the comments that did come up also, this is me free, this is me riffing now. Um, one of the issues that came up was, uh, why would a developer choose this process as it was described as convoluted versus the special permit process? Well, the special permit process, again, I think is not a, uh, mutually beneficial situation. Uh, it comes to us, we get, we have all of 65 days to act on it. Um, and they, they come with a preconceived notion of what is right for the town without our input and the PRDD allows us to give our input. It allows us from the very beginning to let them know, uh, how we feel about what they're proposing, how we feel it would fit in the town and how it would meet the residents' needs. So that was one editorializing. Uh, parcel size and project size. Uh, this regulatory framework has not been written solely for the purpose of facilitating large projects or buildings. It's not just for a million square foot warehouse. It also does not include a minimum project or building size for eligibility. Rather, it's been developed to facilitate, to facilitate the development of a large and unique parcels to ensure compatibility. And we'll get into that a little bit more in the limits to bulk standards. Uh, we also were asked to look at, um, other communities in the area that potentially have similar language and we've identified Brooklyn, Mansfield, Wellington, Canton, Summers and Tolland, all having some version of a special development district included within their regs. Uh, staff capacity was an issue, our limitations on our, um, uh, personnel. Uh, the town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission has a standing contract with NECOG for engineering services as needed. The commission's staff includes certified planners, zoning enforcement officials and inland wetlands agents who would assist in the review of any project should an application be received. Should specific subject matter experts be necessary as part of the review of any application, Ashford's free or fee ordinance allows the commission to engage the appropriate professionals at a cost to be borne by the applicant. This came up a couple of times with some of the public comment. The thing is, if it were just had the special permit process, we wouldn't have time to reach out to a, uh, engineering expert or whatever type of information we needed from a professional group in a 65 day period or a 35 day for the first hearing and then 65 day for any type of continuance from that point. Um, we would need to find someone, we would need to hire that group, we would need to give them the or, um, uh, specifics that we're looking for. They would need to do the evaluation and then they would need to report back to us so that we could then have the information we needed for a hearing. Whereas we can apply this from the very beginning when we know from an applicant what it is they're looking to do with the process that we have in place with the PRDD. We can reach out to these experts and we can, again, use the cost borne by the applicant because we have a process in place, but we have time to do this from the get-go. We know what we're getting into early on. Uh, limits to bulk standards. Establishing caps within the current framework assumes that the setbacks and other bulk standards contained with the, within the IID, general commercial and technical development zones are something beyond subject limits established when the regulations were originally adopted. The intent behind the PRDD is to allow the most appropriate use of the property based on location, topography, wetlands, adjacent uses, et cetera, versus the standard of one size fits all approach that the current commercial zones take. And lastly allowable uses, while the allowable uses have been categorized, many of the included uses are readily allowable and listed elsewhere in the zoning regs. So that is the responses to the earlier hearing information. Mike, do you want to call up the, uh, planned rural development for the, well, let me ask if there are any questions on the responses from the commissioners? I don't see everybody at this point. View, view, view. Okay. If I said, if there's an electronic hand up, I'm not seeing it right now. I'm sorry. So. Okay, Mike, go ahead. If you're going to pull up the planned rural development district and the, uh, red line version.
Did it switch over?
Okay. I'm seeing it now.
The reg, okay. Do you want me to just run through the red line of?
Yeah, yeah. The changes based on the input that we received from the, uh, earlier hearing. Yes.
So, so step one in D, which is the application process, we've taken out the word approval. Now it just says zoning verification. Uh, I think that the word approval seemed to be creating the implication that there was some affirmative action being taken or, or some sort of tacit, um, endorsement by the commission to the applicant at this point in the process, which, which is not the case. This is essentially, uh, you know, a, a little bit more of an inflated sort of reviewing for completeness, nothing, nothing really beyond that, essentially that the application aligns with, with the PRDD. So we removed that so that there was no confusion on anybody's part, um, with regard to the, uh, any approval or what the decision was. Um, in, in step two, we clarified and included the language so that it's clear that we are reviewing this in accordance with the existing special permit standards. So we, instead of just having the section, we, we clarified that, um, and, and took out a, uh, item four, which was a reference to sort of a previous draft, but was an incomplete, um, number. And then I think the other piece was at the bottom, um, under H for modifications. Um, so we clarified that language again with the previously with the double negative. Now it reads such modifications. Such modification does not propose to increase building size, height, um, building or impervious coverage by more than 10%. Um, so a 10% or more change to any of those criteria would not be eligible for this modification. Um, number two, um, the, the wording has been clarified. It now reads any changes from a previously approved use to another permitted use do not exceed 25%. So the intent here was really so that through the propose, proposal and approval process, the uses remain consistent. And that the applicant doesn't, you know, propose some type of conceptual use that is, you know, what maybe the commission is most happy to see with, you know, and then come back sort of afterwards and say, well, everything's going to stay the same, but, but the users inside the building are completely different. So we wanted to really keep that consistency, ob- obviously with multi-tenant buildings. If that's the case, you may have, you know, one tenant change or something like that, but, but we didn't want to have significant changes. So we clarified that we're talking about changes to the use. We're not talking about, um, the physical structures. Um, and then talking about the, uh, permitted uses. So we're not uh, having the commission issue an approval for a use that's in the reg and then having them come back and saying, oh, I'd like to modify and then proposing some use which doesn't exist. So this is only limited to, from permitted use to another permitted use. And it's only first portions of the existing building. Um, and then we, again, in the last section clarified the green space. So now read such modification will not reduce onsite green space by more than 5%. So any of the, any modification which doesn't meet those criteria would require the review of the full commission. And the intent behind this language overall, I guess, just to sort of sum up, is that with larger parcels, um, you're, you're, you run the risk, I mean, as, as is the case with every, with every site, I mean, we, we issue approvals for people to build single family homes and they rarely are constructed exactly in the location that they are shown on the proposed plan because you know, you have things in the field or, or things change with market conditions or whatever. And so there are always little things that need to be tweaked. And so we want to capture that without having the spirit of the approval be modified after the commission has seen it. Um, so those are the, the last page is just the, uh, sort of going over the process, which is the same. But there are no, I don't want to make everybody dizzy. Um, those were the, those were the red lines.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Um, so that is the, um, statement of the applicant. I open it up to the commission members for questions, uh, input, concerns. Commissioner Bellamy.
I don't know why I always have to be the first one, but, um, thank you, Mike and Jeff for working on that. Um, uh, I still have an issue on, um, under the modifications to I, um, with the 10%. Um, if, if we're dealing with a large property, 10% can be a lot. And, um, we know that, um, increasing impervious coverage, um, by 10% could make a difference. Um, so I would prefer that it only be 5% and, and I, I don't see why, if, if, if this is a big project, why it's such a big deal to wait two or three weeks or even four to come to the commission and ask them for these changes.
That reminds me of something that I think came up at the meeting that I wasn't at, which would have been June, um, with some of these numbers. The reason we, we ran the, the hearing with these numbers is because when we had proposed, some of them are kind of contemplated them several months ago. These were the, sort of the highest extent of what the commission ever discussed. And so we can always go from 10 to five, 10 to eight, 10 to two or 25, you know, we can go down. We just can't go up. So when I ran the original language, I started with the high number so that the commission during the hearing, if they landed on something lower, we'd be within the realm of, of what's allowable for the hearing. So we can, we can certainly adjust that to five. If that's what the commission wants as part of this, that would be no problem.
I would suggest that, I don't know if.
I would agree with 5%.
So just to give you some reveler or some practical matter on 150,000 square foot um, building that's being proposed, uh, which is pretty good size, uh, I think a little bit less than, uh, or about, I don't know, 25% less than FedEx or do you know what they are over in, uh, Wellington, Mike?
They're in the like 270, I think.
270, okay, so it is, it's about, it's about a third less, but anyways, 150,000 square feet. At 5% is 7,500. So basically that is about the same size as Dollar General, so you fit, you can fit $20. Dollar Generals inside that 150,000 square foot. Facility. So it's. It's not, it's not hugely significant. As opposed to if we went with 10%. So then it would be. 15,000 and it would only be $10 generals in that size, but still. 5% I think is is a doable amount, and if it lessens anyone angst, building height. On a 35 foot building, that's a one foot, 1.75 feet. Difference, so I think that. The zoning enforcement officer and the chair. Would be able to offer that up, and again, this would not be done necessarily in a vacuum. It would be done with. Bringing it to the commission, but just again, if there are time constraints, if we're requested by a developer. To be able to make these tweaks and these changes and allow for them so they can move forward. Yeah, I can see where 5% would fit probably better. Than a 10%, we'd be much more comfortable with that.
Me too.
Anything else from the commissioners, any other comments?
Agree with Janet, 5%.
Okay. Any other concerns regarding the responses, Luther, go right ahead.
Sorry, I was delayed trying to pull up the. The language so that I could look at it. One more time while I was talking, talking, so. If we're talking about reducing I. Or modifying I under under page modifications. I know it. Makes it more wordy, but. I think. I think it might be wise that if we're, if our, if our principal concern is impervious coverage. Or building size. And we want to restrict those. To that 5%, you know, I can understand the logic in that, but. 5% differential in height. Is is a pretty nominal thing, a 10% differential in height. Is a pretty nominal thing. And and I I. I mean, you're talking about real small changes where. Where. The the plan may show. You know, foundation exposure. Of of eight inches and and when the. Construction actually, you know. Begins or or or, you know, the the planning revises and they need to. Have that exposure go from an an eight inch exposure to a 20 inch exposure or something, and now we've all all of a sudden got. Such limiting values on height changes that it just parks everything. I don't, I don't, I guess I don't understand why. We perceive that there's some damage that that may be. Occurring from allowing. A 10%. Change in in building height.
Oops, alright. Went blind there for a second. Yeah, it's like, it's like we're trying to, I always have this problem making a graph. Where. You're trying to fit in a couple pieces of data, one's very large, one's very small and. It's the same type of thing here, I mean, building size is 150,000 square feet. And we know the absolute height is 35 feet right now. And. To apply the percentage to both of those is the same percentage of both of those. One has a very large, what seems a much larger effect. And the other has, as Luther pointed out, a very minuscule effect.
So so and again, I can't remember, I can't hold all this in my head at the same time, so bear with me, the. We're saying that the, even in this. Process that we have a maximum height of 35 feet, is that correct?
Currently.
So so we we have that as our as our ceiling. And and. So if we have a hard ceiling. Then what's it matter if they. If they want to change their height so long as it's within the ceiling?
So this wouldn't, this wouldn't be limited, that ceiling would applies in the. The reg. Zones that are in place now, that. That that ceiling wouldn't exist. In an application with the PRDD, they would be looking at. What was approved as part of the request that the commission issued a decision on.
Okay, that. That makes more sense then because. That then, yeah, they may, they may come in and ask that their master plan vision may include. Various. Building heights. You know, if if it's multi-structures, there might be some that are 20 something feet, they may be asking for some that are 45 feet. But but if. If we're limiting them to 5%. You know, change after the fact. I just think that. You know. Somebody wants to. Revise their plan to accommodate roof mounted solar and it pushes the. Total height of the building up, you know, four feet. And it's a, you know, it's in excess of the. 5% and they can't do roof mounted solar without jumping through hoops, I just, I don't know, it just doesn't resonate with me.
So right now, we're actually, I'm sorry, go ahead, Janet.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't have any problem with 10% on building height because as you say, we're. Talking about either 50,000, 100,000. And 50 square feet versus 35, 45, so. The the net result would be much smaller, so. I I think that would be reasonable.
So do we need to, well, we're, we're actually having more discussion than we are hearing right now on this, so I guess. We can, we can move this discussion to the modifications and things like that to the. Discussion process, and now if the commissioners don't have any other questions about what we're showing here besides what's been laid out, we'll go to the public comment. Okay. Christina Seba. You are muted.
Sorry. I still have the same problems I had at the first hearing, but I won't go over those. I also got stuck on this modifications thing. So when you're talking about, and I think the height thing is again, kind of trivial. I don't know what the rest of that sentence, such modification does not propose to increase building size, height. Building or impervious coverage, I assume that second building is a typo. The issue, however, is I believe the current regulations allow in the ID. D zone 240,000 square feet building, correct?
I believe it's 250, I think.
Okay. 20, 10% of 250,000 is 25,000 square feet, it's not a trivial amount, that's a big. Big addition to a building. Right? 24, 25,000 square feet is a big building and that could be allowed with just one person looking at it. Not comfortable with that, the second thing is impervious coverage by more than 20, 10% or more, I don't know if it's a huge amount of impervious coverage existing already. 10% could be a very large amount. Again. With one person saying, go for it, seems a little weird. Any changes from previously approved to propose proposed building use to another permitted use. Do not exceed 25% of square footage, 25%. Of a 250,000 square foot building is. I did it on 240 is in excess of 60,000 square feet. So we're saying that they could come in and say, oh, well, we now have another tenant. Who wants 60,000 square feet to be a totally different usage than we were originally approved for. That seems a little bit much. So I don't know, I mean. It seems to me that this, this may be fine for some smaller building on Cattle Rock. But in terms of a 250,000 building on the IID zone, it just really seems. A little much to have it only be. Vetted by one person, so I would like to see most of these changes go to the board. You know? If it takes another three weeks, these buildings, if it's a huge building, hey. They got three weeks, they can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Charles Viddick.
Okay, yes, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I do with, I do agree with Christine. The, it really should go before the whole board for these types of things. Having worked in the major facilities branch of the postal service for many years. Doing reviews of buildings that are. Anywhere from 10,000 to a million square feet. I can tell you, as you go through 10%, 30%. A design, when you get to 30% design, you do not make changes like that in a building. It is just not, it's not how the business works out there. It's just not, this is all hocus pocus that's going on right now. Once you get to 10%, you make very little changes, that's really like the back of the envelope level we used to say. When we designed major facilities across the Northeast and I've worked on them all over the country. 30% design, you're not making changes except internal, internal changes to buildings. So really, if you're going to have that. Type of concept, which is really significant, it should go to the whole commission, no question about that. Let me just mention a few things, so I would just gut that particular provision. I noticed that your notes did not include my comments. In my comments, I said that certain uses go well together. Housing. And commercial as mixed use concepts, that was not included in your notes, if I may ask. If those notes be revised, reflect. That comment. Why do I say that? I'm not sure if the commission is aware, but Public Act 2549, which is House Bill 5002. Is pending this September. It is going to be a radical change in the housing requirements for every municipality in Connecticut. I urge you to read that piece of legislation. Governor Lamont put it off. Because he got enormous pressure from municipalities. But he really begrudgingly did it. The chances that we're going to have housing responsibilities. At the municipal level are very, very likely. And what I would urge the commission to do, a couple things. One is to put in within that section. That incentives are given. For inclusion of housing. With whatever development is put there. Because that will give Ashford a leg up. In providing for affordable housing because that. I don't know if you read the newspapers and I'm not even sure if you've looked at the law. The law was just put on hold by. Governor Lamont until September. And there's going to be a showdown at the OK Corral on this issue. And it's going to be very difficult for the. Governor to veto it. Because the pressure for the affordable housing is so great. It would give Ashford a leg up. To be able to put something in this about the affordable housing in some way that was an incentive concept. We would be looking very good in that regard. I would also like to speak to the point about the. Using of the contractors. It's not correct to say that you can't use contractors under the consulting role. For a special permit. All you have to do is follow what Mansfield does, you have a contract. In advance, which is a. Contract which is done in advance of any project. Which you have that contract ready to go. So you don't call them up at the time of the proposed special permit. Or even of the plan of this curtain. Plan development concept, you already have them under contract for. A, B, C, D, E, you name the number of different types of work that you want from them. That's the way you do it, because then instantly they can do it, I've been involved with a lot of projects in Mansfield. Where they use those and they have them under a contract which is already pre-approved. Ready to go, so that's not really an issue. It's not an issue that this is going to give you an advantage and have more time, you can. Certainly do that and it's done all over the place, so it's not, that's not, that's not really one of the reasons for this. I do agree with the change from zoning approval to zoning verification. Or to be more accurate, it's a complete application has been determined, that's what you want to do because. The big issue, if you look at that Windsor case law that I sent in my previous comments was. To the extent that you've already pre-approved something. And the public does not have a right to it. You really need to read that case from the Supreme Court that I sent to you. Because that that's key language, so the change you've made is a good one, I think that's excellent change. But I do think that. The issue of. Putting something more that incentivizes. The housing there would make us in town look really good. Because it's going to happen, the question is just how it's going to happen, I mean, the pressure right now, if you follow that law. It's, there's going to be a consequence here, so to the extent that we can tie that in, and it's actually. If you're, I'm a professional planner, if you are integrating housing and commercial development or housing and. Certain kinds of industry depending upon the kind they are, that actually is a good thing for a lot of. Purposes of reducing the number of trips that are generated. Improving walkability, all of those things happen by clustering, so I would, if you can put an incentive on that. Or something that would work that way, I think that would be good, and of course. You've heard me say it quite a few times before, to the extent that we can put in. Things that actually establish some. Conservation concepts. Once again, as I've said before, 99.9% of Ashford is in a public water supply watershed, there's no other town in Connecticut. That has that threshold of responsibility, so to the extent that we can integrate. Some higher standards of stormwater management. That would, that would be excellent, and I say higher standards. Stormwater management plans in towns that are urban. Do not achieve the same things or have the same objectives as stormwater management plans. Where we're drinking the water that's coming out of the stormwater of a gas station. And you're in a public water supply, that of course is the same principle here for this planned development district, we have to be very mindful. So it shouldn't be an open negotiation, there have to be some minimum standards here. And I think you'll find that there are plenty of the planned development districts in Connecticut. That do have. Specific standards they put in, they're not just. You know, an open check. And just as it goes, if you're looking for that, as you know, all you have to do is go to Eastford, they have no zoning at all, that's a perfect scenario. There's nothing, but that's not what we want, we want to have some basic standards because. Eastford doesn't have the environmental. Responsibilities that we have in many respects, just because of what we are, where we are in the public water supply watershed, so anyway. I think it's, it'll be interesting to see whether any developers actually go for this proposal. whether any developers actually go for this proposal. Particularly because we're in a location in eastern Connecticut that doesn't have the locational advantages of an East Windsor, a South Windsor. Uh, there's a lot of things that you need for economic development, and one is the labor force. So we don't have some of those things. So I think we have to be flexible, for sure, I agree with that. But I think we also have to be mindful of some of the, uh, responsibilities that we have since nineteen ninety-five, as I've said before, which is conservation and development. And that balance, I think, is the key that we are struggling with here. But in any case, going forward, I think that's a key thing. The more that we have some guidelines on here, because if there aren't any guidelines, it's harder for the commission to come to a resolution. And it's also harder for the developer to know exactly what cards we're playing here. I mean, I've done a lot of work, and I used to locate major facilities in the Northeast. And when I pick sites for development, obviously, I looked at the zoning regulations to see what they allowed. That's a key variable. And they had to have the appropriate land, appropriate sewer and water, but we don't have sewer and water. So that is a big drawback here. So it has to be within the context of what we can do within the sustainable principles of a septic system or community leaching system. That's the challenge of how do we do that? And then, if you get into that, into a community leaching system, where are the guidelines that we wanna use when the state is using a general permit concept? With no oversight, it's all a general permit. And as a result, we're in a situation that we really need to know that the controls that are put on those systems, which the town is gonna have to do, have gotta be better than the general permit that the state has for these programs. Because it's really, all they do is fill in the N, N P D S, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Quarterly Monitoring Reports. Now, who's reading those? The state is not reading, they don't have the staff anymore. So when we get into something like this, and people say, oh, the D E P will take care of it. Well, if you look at what the history of this, and I've managed these community leaching systems in Massachusetts, they are not trouble-free. This is a big issue. There's nothing in the current proposal that deals with any of that. That's just an example. It does need specificity, we can't rely on the state at this point. If you're familiar with these systems, they're not trouble-free. They're not like a septic system leaching field. And the, um, public health districts that we have in Connecticut are not qualified, uh, to deal with this. All you have to do is talk to the, uh, health people over in Mansfield who run the program, they'll tell you that issue. I'm telling you some of the things that I know that are concerns. So, uh, if you bring in a professional, that will help, obviously. But, uh, that by itself is not distinct from a special permit approach where you have a consultant as well. But you will need that, but you need to have some concept of what all of these issues are. This is not just, let's just open it up and it's a blank piece of paper. Well, you gotta have some boundaries on it, so. I'd say, see what happens here, go down this, uh, road, but I think you're gonna need, for sure, consultants uh, under contract, but you're also gonna need some specificity, I believe. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, I do feel, uh, there's a potential here, but it does need some work, particularly the affordable housing issue.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Viddick. Uh, hang on, Nord, any other public comment? Seeing none? Nord?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, you're not enforcing the three-minute rule.
I thought it was quite informative, so I'm gonna let it go. Thank you, Nord. All right, um, so, from the end of the public comment, um, and some of the input on this, um. Okay, so I think we've gotten in all the information we can for the hearing at this point. Uh, I appreciate everyone's public comment and the pieces that they shared. I think we will close the hearing on the P R D D and go to our discussion uh, in the, um, meeting itself regarding the, uh, excuse me, regarding the, um, text amendment. So, uh, we've closed that hearing, and we will move on to our commission business. I'm gonna open up the P Z dash two-five dash three to any further discussion where we are with the, uh, permit application for the motor vehicle sales and service at two-two-one Pompey Hollow. Any further discussion that anyone wanted to give from the commissioners?
So that one, we don't need to discuss, because you continued it, and I think the applicant-
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I thought I closed it, you're right, I'm sorry, it's a, it's a continuation. Let me mark that down before I forget that.
And I promise I'm not just saying that because of the time, that's what I remember you guys actually doing.
No, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right, just like, uh, Luther, thank God you and Luther are like on top of it for me. P Z dash two-five dash two, the text amendment application, which we did disclose the hearing, and open it up for any further discussion, uh, on this. What are your thoughts? What do you feel about this? Just to do a summation on the modification, it sounds like that was one of the stickier issues when it came to this. And I don't know if I'm comfortable with just the, uh, Z E O and the chair being able to give that approval. Um, I know it makes us more flexible for developers making slight changes and such. But again, it's, uh, you know, when you start doing the math on some of these, it does seem pretty significant. Thoughts?
So, my two cents is pretty simple is, I think you have to trust people to do their job at a certain point. And if we're retaining services, we should just let those people do their jobs, because they're accountable to us. And if we can't trust those people to act in the best interests and good faith of the commission, then you know, we've got bigger problems than deciding on the size of the limitation of changes.
Can I ask, um, Mike, um, how, has this come, how often does this come up? Is it something that you've seen frequently, or?
I think that it's, I mean, it's, it depends on kind of what the project is that we're talking about, you know, I, as we've heard and, and as we see with, with projects, most often, the preferred approach is to know what you're gonna build, have a tenant for when you build it, to get approval for what you wanna build and your tenant wants, and then build it. But, you know, we live in a world now where, um, that's not always the case. Some, sometimes projects are done prior to tenants. You know, I think that, um, it, it's possible, it's not all the time. It's, it, no matter what, you know, a modification of any kind is gonna require some type of time. It's gonna require redesign on their part, which means money. So nobody is, nobody is going forward, you know, thinking, oh, this is close enough. I, you know, the, the tough part is just, you know, this is a multi-step process, and so how do you codify, uh, you know, a minor change without having to send them through, you know, that kind of back to square one, or, or whatever. I haven't really given much thought to if there's a, another option, I, I guess one of the things would be that the commission could, well, I, I really think that, that if the, if the language as written isn't something the commission is comfortable with, I think, you know, you could just remove it. And then they would seek modifications through the commission, through the process, as normal. Otherwise, I think you'd have to come up with some kind of tiered, tiered structure where, you know, certain minor things could be done by the commission, maybe without a hearing, as sort of a site plan amendment and other things would require, you know, more significant, which require more significant modification, would have to go back for consideration. I think that's kind of the only way to really structure it.
Can I just add, under the current, if, if we get rid of this and somebody needs to make the change, can't they just come to our next meeting and ask for it? What's, what's the process?
So the, I mean, with this, with the master plan process, it, without anything, if we just, if we just remove it, they can build what they got approval for, but if they wanted to change anything, they'd have to come back to the commission. Modifying the master plan requires a hearing. So, you'll, you know, best case scenario, you're talking receipt at next month's meeting with a hearing at the following meeting. Um, because this isn't just a site plan application, so there's no way to get around having to kind of go through the whole step. So if someone comes back and says, hey, you know, as it turns out, we need to tweak the site circulation here to accommodate this, or we had to move this around, because this got a little bit longer here, or something, that's gonna require a modification of the application in its entirety. So I mean, we could try to, we could try to clarify that a little bit more. But as it stands now, if we removed it, they'd be coming back to the commission, there's not really a way to not have the hearing, no matter how minor.
Also, you know, the language says may, not shall. And so if, if a request is brought forward in the chair, whose, whose party to the request says, ooh, pump the brakes, this isn't something that we're comfortable, uh, with, there's no implied requirement to process it through this. It's may, it's not shall.
And you're saying there's no process for them to uh, kick it up to the board? Is that what you said, Luther?
He's saying there's no obligation that the staff-
There's no obligation to execute modifications in the, you know, this is permitting it, but it's not obligating it. So if, if, if there was a, you know, if there's a twenty thousand square foot building, and they need a a change in building impervious coverage of eight percent, it's not a really significant number. The chair and the zoning enforcement officer, you know, might be able to execute that, because again, these master plans may include more than one building size, it may include multiple buildings, and it might be a minor building adjustment that, you know, we're, we're all talking worst-case scenarios, but we have to think about the holistic approach that we're, we're looking for with these master plans. So in that scenario, if it's an adjustment to one of the smaller buildings on the master plan, then the chair and the zoning enforcement officer may be comfortable with executing that authority. But if it is a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot building that they're asking for an eight percent change on, then in all likelihood, the chair and the zoning officer are gonna say, ooh, that's, that's a, that's a big number, I, I don't think we can execute that change through this process, and you're going to have to submit to going back through the full process.
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were suggesting changing it to shall, but you were just saying that shall means you're not required to.
Yeah, I mean, the language is not- Yeah, yeah, so I'm just trying to, you know, remind folks that, you know, there's multiple scenarios, but, but we're not obligated to execute on any scenario through this language.
Maybe reviewed administratively by the chair. So how does that make the group feel about the numbers?
I'd still feel comfortable with the five percent and then ten percent height.
Well, if we're breaking it all down, what about the impervious coverage? Staying at ten percent?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, five percent for everything except height at ten percent.
Okay.
You're supposed to read my mind.
And what about I I, and it's twenty-five percent?
I'm comfortable with that personally, I think that if it's a, it's, it's another permitted use, and it has no impact to traffic, then what's it matter? It's, it's another permitted use.
Right. Right, which we would have really no pushback on, it's permitted, so what we would have no pushback on it anyways.
In many ways, it's a waste of the commission's time to have to circulate it, and, and a waste of the public's time to have to circulate it back through, because it's a permitted use.
Right, there's, there's nothing, there's, there's really nothing actionable we can do, because it's permitted.
I mean, in some ways, it's almost, if it's a permitted use, does it need to have a percentage shift, uh, limit? I guess it does, actually, because it's, it's part of the story that we're being told as, as the master plan. So yeah, I guess, I guess we wouldn't wanna see a greater than twenty-five percent change in the storyline of the master plan without going back through uh, and repitching the entirety of it.
Okay. So if we tiered I to building size five, height ten, building impervious five, left I I, and left I I I, is the commission comfortable with those numbers?
I am.
Yes.
Yeah.
And to Luther's, and to Luther's point, the fact that, uh, you know, you need, you need to trust the people you hire, or the people you elect, and the people you put in, even in this day and age. So the fact that, and the fact that it's a may, not a shall, they're not required to do it. They just have the opportunity to do it if it feels right, if it fits, uh, as the representative of the zoning enforcement officer and the chair of planning and zoning. Comfort level there?
I'm comfortable.
I'm fine with it, Mark. Okay. So to that end, uh, Mike, we are in a discussion section, we have some minor changes to the text. Do we need to put it to another hearing?
No. Because you're not, you're, you're reducing the scope.
Yep.
Which gets back to why we, yeah, that's why we led with those high numbers, because we knew that the commission wasn't gonna go above those. So because you're reducing the scope, you don't have to put it back to hearing.
Okay, so we'll go with, uh, breaking out size, height, and building impervious coverage, uh, to five, ten, five? And that's really the only change to this early-on plan, I'll call it. Because, you know, if we do need to start identifying some more specific uh requirements, we can do that. Going forward, but at least it gets us a step in the right direction. It protects us. Uh, ideally, and again, makes it look like we want to work with people.
The other thing that I want to clarify, just to, because it's a it's a nuance, but I think it's important. This, what we're discussing, section two, is a modification to a previously approved and valid site plan.
Yep.
And I think that's important because, you know, moving beyond COVID realm when there was extensions to site plans. A site plan approval is only good for five years. So, you know, this is not some ongoing or or a regulatory approval that runs with the land. The master plan is in place. But we specify in one that a a change to the master plan has to go to the commission. This is only a change to the to the site plan itself. And again, the site plant, site plans do not run with the land. They expire within five years of their date of approval. So there there isn't a. Long standing thing. If somebody gets something approved and they they don't construct it, or they they come back several years later, want to change something, or. They have a new tenant and everything is different. They're not going to come in and and propose something substantially different, right? Because the the lifespan of a site plan, because it's administrative on the commission's part. Is is uh very short timeline, it's five years. And if they're talking about to Luther's point to that. That whole storyline they're proposing, any modification to the master plan that they wanted to to make, that always goes to the commission. So this this process would not be for amending the the master plan. Always require the hearing, always go back to the commission, so just be the site plan.
You you just reminded me of a change also under G. Um, that was requested, I believe, from, uh. I think it was Mike Gantik last time around, um, in that, uh, the. Experi of the master plan. Move from twelve months to, he's thinking like, he was he was suggesting thirty six, but I'm wondering if we made that. Because of the amount of time it does take for developments and plans and things to come to fruition. Uh, if we made that twenty four months with the grant of a po- from the commission of a possible twelve months, totaling the thirty six months. What's the feeling, mission? Oh, Mike, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I didn't make that because we heard from the public on it, but the commission didn't really discuss it, which is why I didn't make the change.
Yeah.
I I personally prefer leaving it as is, and I think from my recollection of our discussions. About this. The initial reason for leaving a short timeline on that is so that we don't end up with. Placeholder. Master plans or or. Master plans that are being submitted, um, and then not acted upon. So that, you know. You got a year to do a site plan after you have your master plan. And then you can get an extension of another year. And and even reasonably complex projects should be able to generate a site plan within twenty four months. If if you're at all serious about doing the development.
I see. You don't want him just putting a pin in it, so to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, because then also, you know, it 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 opens up an opportunity for, um. Disconnect with the community, that that, you know, oh, it's been three years since this was on anybody's radar. That this master plan was submitted and approved, and then. You know, people, people have a short term memory and well, when did you do that? When did that happen? It's like, no, let's. Start the process, let's carry the process forward and let's close the process out instead of having years and years between steps of the process.
Okay. Um, any other input along those lines? Okay, no qualms. I have I have no, I have no argument to extend it. That you, you know, uh, fully understanding, as you were saying, complex plans, if they're serious, they will come through. Okay, um, that being said. I am looking for a motion. To approve the text amendment. And adding the planned rural development district, the PRDD, three hundred dash twenty point two. Um, to the regs with the stipulated changes. Provided by the commission tonight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Luther seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the planned rural development district text amendment signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions. So move six to zero. You're good, Mike. You need anything?
Uh, I need to, the commission to establish an effective date. Just based on making the revisions and posting a notice of decision in the paper. My recommendation would be that we set the effective date as September first.
That's what I was going to say. That being a holiday is not an issue. No, I guess not. Okay, so, uh. Alls in favor of the effective date being September first?
Aye.
Two thousand twenty five?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions. So moved. You probably can combine those motions. Yes, Jerry?
Uh, I would like to make sure the, uh. On the agenda for next month is the Airbnb.
Yeah, we we've got that in the works. We've got that in the plan. Thank you. Um, we got a couple more things to do here. Um, review of the P O C D draft sections, and I am extremely. Apologetic for the miscommunication, uh, in getting this out to you for review. Um, you all have the email that indicates the introduction, the vision. Uh, which includes a vision, the agriculture and the energy sections. The format is basically there. Um, we've tried to do a template where there's the narrative for the group. There's a vision statement for each group. Then there is the, um, uh, issues that they are facing. And then it goes into the objectives for the group. Uh, there are specific objectives for each department, the agricultural commission, the uh, energy. Uh, clean energy task force, and then. As best we could, we are trying to identify actionable. Objectives of the P O C D, working with that group to assist that group in what they're trying to accomplish. That's kind of the framework we're working with. Um, I'll ask you to. Take these, uh, review them at your leisure. Again, some of the language is still. Being edited here, most of it is, I'd say it's ninety eight, ninety nine percent already there, everything that's in that, those sections. We will have more sections for you for the September, actually have them to you. Earlier, so you can review them, and we can have a further discussion on them at the next meeting. Uh, again, the group is working very, very hard. They're doing a great job. Um, we're all, Mike is being a little bit. Delayed with getting some of the tables and stuff because of the source he's getting them from. They're a little bit delayed. Mike, I don't know if you've heard anything. I know you've been out of the office, in and out. Have you heard anything from NCOG?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, so that's being delayed. Uh, for us to, uh, get in all the tables and figures and, uh, some of the data. That's in there, but what you have, I think agriculture actually has, Luther worked very hard on that. And, uh, has most of its tables and information are updated. Uh, whereas the other ones, we're trying to find the sources and get very similar tables and things that we've, uh, felt were effective from the last time around. Uh, Janet or Mark, is there anything you want to share regarding the, uh, P O C D?
No, I think it's going along smoothly.
Um, we've got a, we've got a pretty good balance of, uh. Well, we're trying to have a balance anyways of conservation and development. I mean, it's a. Very difficult balance. Uh, Mike has tried to give us some direction on that also when it comes to. Uh, what our visions are for Ashford, where we're using the public information, the surveys, the listening session, we're using. All of these sources, the resources at our disposal to try and put together a plan that. As Janet says, you can't please everyone, but let's. Let's try to appease the middle fifty percent on either side. So, uh, that's kind of the short. Version of the review. We will review these fully. I know it's getting late. We will review these fully next time around. Uh, along with having the earlier, uh, additional versions for you for the September meeting. Last item, review of application checklist. Uh, Mike, do you have that available?
Yeah, so something I was gonna, I was gonna kind of just mention, I've talked about. Um, we're working with permit link to get the application form in its entirety or the, you know, on to permit link system. We've given them a a rendering of what we want the the digital application to look like. And what information it'll contain. So I'm wondering, it's up to you, we can go through it. Um, although this is really just a codification of the requirements of the regs as they sit, but. We're going to incorporate this into the application portal itself, so I'm hoping that by the next meeting, it'll be all together. I can. If the commission wants to discuss it now, we can, or I can kind of show you how they'll be integrated. Into permit link, which is what they're working on now. I just wanted to let you know that that was kind of the where we're headed.
Does, uh, anyone want to see the application again, what we're talking about with the, um, permitting process? You want to throw it up, Mike, if you've got it?
This is the, um, form that the commission reviewed previously. So. It, we're referring to it as an addendum, so we're, you know, we're going to have it as an addendum to the application. We've talked, the commission has talked about creating a similar addendum for like short term rentals, and so we're trying to create consistency in terminology. So we will have an application form which says who's the applicant, the address, what are you requesting, and then, you know, we'll have various. Addenda. So this one, this is just. Us more or less verbatim right out of the regulations for the requirements, and so it'll just be provided, not applicable or waiver requested. We've got the link to the top which takes them to the regulations themselves. So this is not creating any new requirements. It's not eliminating requirements. It's not changing anything. It's just putting this in a more digestible format. Um, but essentially, modifying this would really require a text amendment because we'd be modifying. The regulations themselves.
Right.
Goal here would be to integrate this into the application form so that every commission application includes this and the applicant goes through and. And completes it. So you know what they're providing, what they feel isn't applicable, or what waiver they're ultimately requesting.
I have a very quick question on this, if that's okay?
Sure.
I understand there will be instances of not applicable, you know, but. Uh, my concern is that we, we have people, um. Deciding that. They believe that, uh, they don't need a site plan, so that's not applicable, when in reality, they need to rec- request a waiver. And so I'm just wondering how we. Um, provide the correct. Direction to those people, um, or or have have this. Have this process slightly less. Free form for that. Or I guess what the guardrails are i- in terms of. Um, hey, you submitted this as not applicable for a site plan, but. No, you need a site plan.
Mike, would you, would your office review this for correctness before it went to the commission?
Yeah, I mean, just to an extent, we certainly, when when people submit applications, I tell them to the best that I. Sort of can what I believe the commission's expectations will be. I believe they'll want a site plan. I expect that they're going to want a narrative or, you know, this, these are questions or concerns that they might have. And I guess as part of this, you know, when they applic- So I, well, let me finish my thought. I tell them what I believe the commission will expect. They are free to take that guidance or. Not, um, but I think perhaps what could happen in this case would be if someone says, oh, I. I just, you know, put N A to everything and I've just given you my application form. You know, when the commission receives the application at the first meeting, you know, you could look at this and you could say, you know. Of course, we haven't heard from the applicant yet, but I, we find it very hard to believe that we are going to. Be able to approve an application that doesn't have a site plan, doesn't have a this, doesn't have that. So you could sort of provide that little gut check. Um, when the application is received, but, uh, I guess. In technically speaking, if an applicant believes that nothing is required and they've submitted the form. You know, as staff, we have to process it because only the commission can actually make that determination.
Sure, sure, but when it comes to us, and like you said, everything is checked off N A. Uh, yeah, I think I I think we would recognize, you know, just in a couple of instances and, but it it gives us the opportunity. To not approve the application.
Right, if you feel that they haven't provided you with the information you need to make a decision on the application, then at that point you could. Well, the first thing you do is say, we don't have enough information, you need to provide it, and if they don't. Then that would be something that, you know, would be grounds for potential denial.
Right, that, but that's 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 denial of the. Application as opposed to non-approval of the application, yes? Or am I splitting hairs?
I don't know the difference. I think.
We still have to receive the application.
Yes.
Right, yeah. Uh, yes, it's not an approval, it's a receipt of the application, yes.
Correct, yes. So so even if someone submits an application request on a napkin, the guidance would be. To schedule the hearing, and then during the hearing, ask the applicant to provide the information that the commission feels is necessary. And if they say no, then that would be grounds for denial, but, um. There is very clear case law that basically says deciding what you need about. From an applicant before you've given them their chance in court to sort of explain to the commission why they think they don't need it. Is premature, so so that, uh, discussion of what's required has to be between the commission and the applicant. During the hearing, it can't be before and and staff can't have it on their behalf.
Right.
Uh, Mike, I have a question. When someone puts a house up for, uh, to be rented as an Airbnb. Do we inspect it to, uh, make sure it's a a safe house to be rented out?
Yeah.
No, we do not. Um, it is, there's no. From a a building and health standpoint, as of now, my understanding at least is there's no change of use. Still being occupied by people, so it's a single family home. Fire marshal has no jurisdiction over single family residences, and from the health department's standpoint. Still people sleeping in bedrooms, so there's really no, no grounds to, uh, to to seek that inspection.
Because I was in a house, uh, in, uh, Enfield, a number of years ago. And the upstairs bedroom, there's only one way down the stairs and, uh, in a fire. The window was, uh. Six feet off the floor and it was not big enough for, uh, me to get out.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't know the the, I don't know all the building code, but a lot of it has changed. I would gather that eighty percent of the houses in. Connecticut don't meet the building code now because it's updated almost annually. Um, but we're not. We're not giving any implied approvals for for any of those things, even if we. Provide an approval for someone to operate a used car dealership, we're not saying that it meets a building, health, fire. Provide an approval for someone to operate a used car dealership, we're not saying that it meets a building, health, fire. Or any other standard, we're, we're simply giving them the ability to conduct. A use as we regulate that use on a piece of property. We don't. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right, um. So that's great, Mike. I'm glad you're getting that uploaded. That'll be great to work with. Um, I, again, it's better than just seeing a couple of squiggles on a. Application and whether they paid or not their fees. Um, and I think it makes people be more serious about what they're considering to do. You know, with us that they come better prepared when it comes to, uh, an application. And, uh, not just, uh, three sentences and okay, that's it. Then, you know, we're just trying to do this. Well, have you gone through all these procedures? So, great. Zoning officer report, anything in particular?
Uh, I'm trying to think if there's anything that else has come in or that we've been working on beyond this application and the. regs, the P O C D. Been working with the first selectman's office on, uh, some of the, some of the, uh, meeting. Digital meeting upgrades and integrations. Uh, getting more on the website now with the new website and. You'll see some stuffs. We've been kind of moving some stuff over there and trying to get more resources, resources there. Think that's.
Has our, has our ad that, uh, Valerie put into our minutes gotten any more, uh, bites or hits on, uh? Signups or you don't, you haven't tracked that?
For what?
Well, we put an ad in to get, uh, alerts when a new, uh, piece of P and Z. Information or actually anything you want to sign up for, um, comes out.
Oh, so the website allows for anybody to subscribe to any, anything, but that's all maintained by the user. So they decide what they want to get notified, notified on.
Right.
Um, so we don't. They don't have to ask the town. They just go in, they put their email address, they, they indicate what they want to be notified on. So that's like, uh. It's sort of, uh, it's external, um.
So we, we have no way of judging how many people or percentage of people or anything have signed up for that.
Right. Cause they could sign up for multiple commissions. It allows them, I believe, to say they just want agendas for this, or maybe they want minutes for that. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't see that.
Okay, you're good?
I'm good.
You're good. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Long meeting, long night. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second from Janet, all in favor? Aye. Good night. Thank you all.